Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News Director Rich Hosford. B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Chris Flaherty and John Vias, Peter Brown with the weather, and Chris Flaherty with community calendar. Thank you for joining us. The first case of West Nile virus of the year in the state has been detected in a man in Middlesex County. Massachusetts Department of Public Health announced on Thursday that the individual is a man in his 60s from Middlesex County who was hospitalized due to his illness. Despite this, DPH says the risk of human infection with WNV is considered to be generally low throughout the Commonwealth. Public Health Commissioner Monica Morel said state officials have not seen much West Nile virus activity this year, but this news is a compelling reminder that everyone needs to continue to take steps to protect themselves and their families from mosquito bites. In 2018, there were 49 human cases of West Nile virus infection identified in Massachusetts. The disease is usually transmitted to humans through the bite of an infected mosquito. While it can infect people of all ages, people over the age of 50 are at higher risk for severe disease. Most people infected with West Nile virus will have no symptoms. When present, the symptoms tend to include fever and flu-like illness. In rare cases, more severe illnesses can occur. As reported by B News, mosquitoes in Burlington were found to be carrying both West Nile virus and eastern equine encephalitis in samples collected on August 29th. State officials strongly recommend people take precautions to reduce their risk of mosquito-borne diseases by wearing appropriate clothing, applying bug spray, and limiting time outdoors during the peak evening times. They also say to empty all standing water on your property to prevent larvae from growing. The Burlington Fire Department held a remembrance ceremony for the people that lost their lives during and after the attacks of September 11, 2001. B News reporter Robert Paris was there and has this look.
Let's take a moment to remember all the people that were lost on that fateful day in September. On September 11th, the Burlington Fire Department held a remembrance ceremony for the tragic event that happened in 2001.
This is a day that public safety officials pause in remembrance of the heroic actions that both our police, our firefighters, our public safety, our EMS people put their lives on the line, knowing full well of the potential dangers that lay ahead. It's also a day of remembrance of our military people, people that made the ultimate sacrifice to support our American freedom. So this is something I feel real strongly about, that we're going to continue the 9/11 ceremony on the common for years to come.
From the Town Common, I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
The Burlington Board of Selectmen denied a liquor license application for a gas station and convenience store that was looking to expand its offerings. Noria Energy had filed an application for a beer and wine license for its shell location at 6163 Middlesex Turnpike. Store manager Nick Demambro told the board that Noria Energy, a family-owned company based out of central Massachusetts that has been in operation for 30 years, currently has 118 locations throughout New England. Of those, 60 stores sell beer and wine and liquor, including seven in Massachusetts. Demambro added that the company has a comprehensive training program for all employees in how to handle age-restricted products, and that they have a zero-tolerance policy for anyone caught selling those types of products to minors, either in a police sting or an internal check. He said that in the stores that sell alcohol, the company has not had any violation in regards to selling to minors. As reported by B News, however, other gas stations in Burlington owned or co-owned by Noria Energy have failed tobacco sale checks conducted by the Burlington Police and the Board of Health. In May of 2017, the Hess Station at 140 Cambridge Street owned by Noria failed its second tobacco sale check within a 24-month period. Worse yet, in 2016, the Shell Gas Station Noria Energy Station at 198 Cambridge Street failed its third tobacco sale sting and was subject to a 30-day suspension of tobacco product sales. Demambro stressed that the company's training and procedures had been updated since other issues in town. He said all employees would get tip certifications before the sale of alcohol began, and all future hires would be certified as well. Despite the assurances, members of the board said they were philosophically against the sale of alcohol at gas stations and convenience stores. They said that the one convenience store in town that does have a beer and wine license, Carly Convenience, obtained it before the current members were on the board. In the end, the board voted 0-4 with one abstaining in favor of approving the license. Selectman Mike Runyon abstained from voting. So that was 4 against, 1 abstaining. September Town Meeting is fast approaching, and to get everyone caught up on the big warrant articles, Town Clerk Amy Warfield came to our BCAT studio to film some informational sessions. B News Director Rich Hosford talked to her about it and has this report.
Burlington's September session of Town Meeting is fast approaching. To get everyone up to speed, Town Clerk Amy Warfield came to our BCAT studio last week to tape a series of informational segments about the various warrant articles. Warfield had held such sessions before past Town Meetings out in the community, but decided this time around to try something new.
Yeah, up to this point, basically what I did is I set up a series of evening meetings. The proponents would come in, give a presentation kind of just like they did here, and let people ask questions in person. It was a little bit more robust because people were able to ask and there was some conversation allowed. But one of the biggest questions I always got asked by people who were not able to attend was, is it going to be on BCAT? Mainly because you guys are a great vehicle for getting information out, but in people's timeframe. And so I decided we'd do kind of a review of all the warrant articles using your studio and bringing people in here to kind of talk about what those issues were.
So what can people expect to see if they watch the informational sessions?
September is kind of a light meeting session because we have some standard elements that are always on there, like the, you know, are we going to need new transferring funds for FYI the current year? Are we going to being able to fund the MWRA debt service? Setting up the town election for April. But this time around, we also have a bylaw article dealing with how Town Meeting members' vacancies are filled. We have a zoning article regarding the Northwest Park PDD, and then a couple of financial articles dealing with the transportation subsidy in terms of what are we going to do for residents here in town, and also a school amendment to the school budget.
Finally, Warfield said these sessions are meant to answer potential questions ahead of Town Meeting and get both members and petitioners ready for a fruitful discussion.
Well, one of the things, one of my goals always with the information meetings was to give people a chance to think about it before they went to Town Meeting. In this particular format, they're not here and active and can't ask their questions, but they can certainly follow up with me either through email or through phone calls, and I'd be glad to get those things back to the proponents, so that the proponents have a better idea too of what are people concerned about, and they can help to build their presentations to answer those questions.
From our own BCAT studios, I'm B News Director Rich Hosford.
A longtime Burlington patrolman was honored with a plaque, a couple of standing ovations, and praise for his years of service at Monday night's Board of Selectmen meeting. Chief Michael Kent presented patrolman Edward J. Mackey with a plaque detailing significant dates of his career after he retired after 34 years on the force. Kent, reading from the plaque, said Mackey had been appointed on November 2, 1985. He graduated from the Metropolitan Police Academy on May 23, 1986. On October 24, 2016, he was awarded Badge Number One for being the longest-serving patrolman in the department. He retired this past summer on July 5. Chief Kent said Mackey was a lifelong resident of Burlington and was a beloved member of the community that everyone knows him by sight. He also praised Mackey's wife and two daughters, acknowledging that the life of a police officer with its odd hours can be difficult for loved ones. Members of the board also had words of praise for the departing officer.
I'll say this, it's been a pleasure working with Eddie for over 30 years together. What I found very inspirational isn't what I say about him. It's when they had a card going around for Eddie when he was leaving, it was very nice to see how a lot of the younger and newer officers kept referring to him as a role model, a role model, a role model. So Eddie, you did your time, but you've obviously brushed off onto the younger generations.
I've known you a long time. You know, you worked with my dad, and you know, I grew up knowing you and the guys, and you know, I have not a bad word to say about you or any police officer in this town. I commend you for your service, 34 years, for being stalwart member of this community, for protecting us day in and day out.
Congratulations on a wonderful career to the town. The town's been very, very well-served by Officer Mackey for 34 years. Thank you, Ed.
Eddie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
A beloved family woman, school librarian, and former member of the Burlington Historical Society passed away last week. Olive Bruce, a librarian and Burlington resident for more than 56 years, died on August 29 at Edgewood Retirement Community in North Endover. She was 95 years old. According to her obituary, she was born Olive Ann Bridge, and she was raised in Wakefield. She graduated from Simmons College, School of Library Sciences, in 1946. After graduation, she worked in the Harvard Law School Library and in the Worcester Free Public Library as a cataloger. She moved to Burlington in 1954 with her husband John Bruce and their two children. She lived in town until she moved to North Endover in 2010. She had a long career in the Burlington School District. In 1958, she became the first school librarian in Burlington, establishing the high school library, and continued there for 16 years before moving to the Marshall Simons Middle School Library for nine years. Olive was also active in the American Red Cross Blood Drive and in the Burlington Historical A Burlington Education Foundation grant is providing BHS students with a visit from a professional artist. Best known for her three-dimensional hand-sewn shadow drawings, Melissa Galazzi will be visiting Burlington High School for a presentation to the entire student body. BHS art educator Christina Chang said the BEF contribution will provide students with an enriching experience that is beyond what would normally be in the curriculum. She said having an artist's visit is a great way to introduce the students to a working artist, to see what they're doing and how they're doing it. Galazzi's work is held in private international collections as well as public collections in the U.S. Chang said each year, there's a school-wide theme, and this year, the theme is about happiness, personal happiness, and how students can find that and achieve it. She said Galazzi is an artist who has dyslexia, and so she's kind of seen the world throughout a different lens. Some people call it a disability, but she found it a strength in her artwork. Chang said she feels Galazzi's story will resonate with students. There will be a reception for the artist on Thursday, September 12, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Cambridge Street Gallery located outside the Burlington High School. Wayside Plaza is getting the autumnal spirit, and in the autumnal spirit, and held a Three Cheers for Fall. Not the rest of us are crazy about it. This was an event featuring store deals, live music, and guest appearances. B News reporter John Vias was there and has this look.
The leaves are falling and windy weather is ahead. Wayside Plaza gave Three Cheers for Fall on Saturday, September 7, featuring store deals, guest appearances, fall cheer, and live music. I took a walk into Oak Furniture Land and spoke with manager Bill Sabador about what they had in store for the special occasion.
We actually have a few different things going on, you know, right now. We actually have our new season sale, which everything's marked down up to 50%. And then we're partnering with Green Tangerine, we're actually doing a raffle, raffling off an accessory. It's a mirror, it's up to $499 value.
Green Tangerine Spa and Salon had their share of Fall Spirit as well, giving sports fans a chance to meet two New England Patriots cheerleaders.
So today, we have two New England Patriots cheerleaders here. We are actually the official spa and salon for the New England Patriots cheerleaders. So they're here signing some autographs, taking pictures. We're giving away raffles and some little goodie bags and some sweet treats for everyone.
It's really great. We have the Burlington Pop Warner team here. They've been so fun. It's been great to meet all of the local cheerleaders here, as well as just people that are coming in, you know, to get their hair done today, that are big fans. So it's been great meeting people of all ages today.
Radio personality Adam Jones from 98.5 Sports Hub was in on the Fall action, too.
We're here to promote Three Cheers for Fall. So we're here, we got Patriots merchandise, we got lots of station swag to give away, we're jamming out. We got cheerleaders here. So yeah, we're just here having a good time on a weekend and saying hi to the people.
Last but not least, this group of pre-teens performed some favorite pop-rock tunes, marking the debut of Desi James and the Smart Alex.
So we got the new cast, and we decided we can just add a K on the end, and now we're the Smart Alex. And we're all smart Alex, that's the thing.
From Wayside Plaza, I'm John Vias for B News Weekly.
Do you have sensitive documents with personal identity information that you want to get rid of? Don't throw them away. Identity thieves will often scour trash bags for personal information they can use to commit fraud. Burlington Town Clerk Amy Warfield will be running a resident paper shred morning in the Town Hall parking lot on Saturday, September 28, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, or until the truck being used to haul away the shredded documents is full. Residents can bring up to two boxes of paper to be shredded for free, and rest assured, the documents are thoroughly destroyed. The boxes can be as big as you can carry. This event is for Burlington residents only, and participants will need to show an ID with the Burlington address. Warfield, Ms. Warfield asked that everyone remove all metal, including paper clips, binder clips, and metal rings before shredding. If you have any questions, you can call Amy at 781-270-1660. Massachusetts' new recycling smart program is an effort to make recycling easier on the consumer and processing side of repurposing. B News Green Corner has some of the basics for you to know, including the fact that the more recycle, the less trash fees we have. So next time you're at the recycling bin, let's check it out.
Recycling in Massachusetts was really complicated because there were 351 municipalities with 351 different lists of what was recyclable, and really tough to educate too, really tough to try to learn from the resident standpoint. So the Department of Environmental Protection got together with the recycling facilities in Massachusetts, and we all agreed on a list of things we want in the bin and a list of things we do not want in the bin. And that is all now together at recyclismartma.org. Paper, if you can rip it, you can recycle it, is generally the word. Your mail, you do not have to take out the windows out of the envelopes anymore. Anything that comes in the Sunday paper can go into the bin, but otherwise, if you can rip it, you can recycle it. We're looking for cardboard boxes. Tape is okay, the labels are okay. Staples, paper clips, all of that sort of thing is okay. Plastic containers, we're looking for, if it's plastic, we want it to be a container that you can hold in your hand with a lid. We'd like to have it come with the lid. So if it's a soda bottle, empty the soda out, put the lid back on, and throw it in. Don't crunch it, please. Metal cans are great, we would love those. Please just give them a quick rinse. And we really want cans, okay? So that's the key word. We're not looking for lawnmower blades or shovels. We want just cans that you ate out of or your pet ate out of. Those are the best. Wine bottles, beer bottles, we're still taking those. Items we do not want in the bin are things like single-use plastic bags, and pretty much every kind of bag can go back to your grocery store where you got it. We do not want it in the recycling bin because it gets wrapped around our machinery. Definitely, food getting on stuff is a big problem. So if you have a glass jar of tomato sauce, please rinse it out first and drain it, so that that water and that tomato sauce doesn't get all over the paper if you throw them all in the same bin together. We do not want things that have had food on them. Cups are out. When you have a paper cup for coffee, for instance, it is a multi-layered item. It has paper, but it also has a plastic layer on it, so the coffee doesn't soak into the paper, right? And we really, in recycling, we want paper, we want plastic, you know? We want completely different items, all paper, all plastic. Problem is that so many people would throw in the coffee, the ice, the straw, the lid, and absolutely everything with that coffee cup, so we ask for no more cups. Newly on the no list are your gable-top cartons for half-and-half milk-orange juice, items like that. Once again, you have that layer of paper, but it's surrounded by a layer of plastic, and that makes it much harder for us to recycle. Not interested. Please throw those in the trash. Clothing is a great thing to give a second life to. We do not want it in the recycling bin. We want you to go find one of those donation bins, and there's plenty around town. You probably hear about recycling your electronics. We definitely don't want, do not want that in the bin, okay? Anything that has a cord on it is going to get wrapped around our machinery. Those items are definitely to be handled specifically for e-waste, we call it. Anything with a battery or a plug. We're just hoping to make it easier. You will see across the top of recyclismartma.org, you'll see that there's a list, there's four major categories of things we want. And if you are the sort of person who doesn't want to work too hard, that's all you need to know. If you don't see your item there, don't throw it in the recycling. If you want to know more, go to the website, and there's a search bar called a Recyclopedia, and that you can look up, it'll give you an answer to everything, pretty much 400 items. Go look it up and educate yourself.
That was our own Gretchen Carey, volunteer vice president here at BCAT. Burlington's a little slack in the recycling department with under 20% being taken out of the trash stream. This has a direct impact on our tax rate. Also environmentally, the more we recycle, the less that goes up to the trash incinerator, and the less tipping fees we have to pay. So get out there and recycle. There have been a couple of cool days this week, but B News weatherman Peter Brown says not to put the shorts and t-shirts away just yet. We'll go to him now with the latest forecast. We'll also check out the community calendar with Chris Flaherty, see what's happening in Burlington.
Well, hello everyone, and this is Peter Brown with a look at your weather for the next seven days. I know it's hard to believe that we are here in the middle of September already. We are counting the days down until the official first day of fall. That is right around the corner. Now, starting at our period, I know a lot of you don't want to see this. Yes, it is Friday, September 13, so Friday the 13th coming up, but we are going to have some absolutely beautiful conditions for you out there. We're going to be seeing temperatures, maybe not even in the low 70s. I think this high temperature is a little bit optimistic for Friday. I don't think we might, may not even get out of the mid and upper 60s on Friday. So very comfortable if you have to be out and about in the Burlington area on Friday. Now, going out at night, temperature is about where they're supposed to be, in the low 50s for this time of the year. Now, we're going to be pretty far away from this record high of 92 that we can still see at this time of the year, but when we get towards the start of our next period, we may not be too far away from those temperatures. So summer is definitely not over with us yet. Of course, rounding in our period, look at that, getting close to the third week of September. As you can see, our temperatures keep getting cooler as we head towards fall. Our temperatures should be probably about in the low 70s. At the end of the period, probably be like that, but then we're going to see a real warm-up as we head into the next week. And of course, as you notice, look at this, our sun is now setting before 7 o'clock at night, so we won't be seeing those really nice long sunsets until we get maybe, probably back into the spring. So fall is definitely on its way. Now, as we go ahead, I'm going to show you a little bit about what we're expecting for temperatures over the next seven to 10 days here in the Burlington area. And this map definitely is not reminiscent of fall, that's for certain. Now, pretty much here in the Burlington area, the rest of southern New England, and actually almost the eastern two-thirds of the country, Climate Prediction Center is expecting above-average temperatures for us. And in our area, that's certainly going to be noted as we head in towards the middle of our period, starting the work week out. And again, looking forward to the week after that, we may see some really warm conditions here. So if you love summer and you love the warm weather, never fear. The fall weather is going to be here, but very briefly. Now, as we go ahead, let's take a look at some of those weather and temps coming up for the next seven days. And again, starting out here on Friday, I don't know, looked like when we put the forecast together, we were going to see maybe some spotty showers on Friday. I don't think that's going to be happening. Looks like we're going to have wall-to-wall sunshine starting out our weekend. Again, temperatures probably not getting up into even 72, probably going to be stuck in the mid and upper 60s. Now, as we get into Saturday, might see a spot shower, maybe a thunderstorm around. Temperature's starting to warm up again, up into the upper 70s. If I'm going to say the pick of the weekend, definitely Sunday. Looks like we're going to have beautiful skies, and look at this, temperatures back into the low 80s. And as we get into Monday and Tuesday, we're going to see temperatures on Monday getting up into the mid 80s and maybe a little bit of humidity, so a real feel of summer coming back. Now, tailing out at the end of our period, looks like we're expecting again pretty sunny skies, nice weather out there. Might have to tack a few degrees onto the temperatures each of these days on Wednesday and Thursday. Looks like we're going to be a little bit warmer, and again, that's really foreshadowing what might be coming here, starting the week, and after that, we might be seeing temperatures in the mid and upper 80s by the time we get there. So folks, don't worry. I know fall is definitely coming, but we really have that feel of summer still in the air, especially if you're getting out there, starting our work week. So everyone, get out there, enjoy the weather, and have a great week.
Hello, I'm Chris Flaherty, and this is your community calendar. Come and learn how to provide a healthier alternate option for you and your friends. On Monday, September 16, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., Lahey Hospital and Medical Center will be having an event called Cooking Up Good Health. Everyone is welcome, and the event is free. For more information, enter RSVP, email Catherine Caruthers, at Catherine F. Caruthers, at lahey.org, or call 781-744-7322. Bring your voice to the stage. Burlington Idol is back. Auditions for the second annual competition can be submitted now through October 18. The event will be held at Chop's American Bar and Grill at the Burlington Marriott in November. For more information or how to sign up, visit chop'samericanbarandgrill.com and become the next Burlington Idol. On Monday, September 23, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., there will be a piano class held at the Council on Aging in Room 207. The class is for people who know nothing about the piano or music. Students will learn the notes on the piano and will play a popular melody by ear and reading note names. Everyone is welcome, and pre-registration is required. The cost of the class is $39 per person. To register, call the Parks and Recreation Department at 781-270-1695. I'm Chris Flaherty, and this has been your community calendar.
The fall sports season is well underway now, and for the latest Red Devils action, we go now to B News sports reporter Liz Gillespie for this week's sports report.
Hey, everyone. I'm Liz Gillespie for your weekly sports report. Burlington High Fall teams have begun their second week in the regular season. The girls varsity volleyball team won against the Redding Rockets on Thursday afternoon. This is the Lady Devils' first win over the Rockets since 2013. Great job to them. The girls will be playing back at home on Tuesday afternoon against the Wayland Warriors at Burlington High. They currently stand 2-1 in their conference. Girls varsity soccer drops down to 0-3 after losing to the Redding Rockets in a shutout of 4-0. The team will travel to East Boston to take on the Jets on Friday afternoon. We had a chance to speak with the team before the start of their season. B News sports reporter Robert Paris has more.
The Lady Devils soccer team has been gearing up for the 2019 season. This week, I headed down to the Marshall Simons Middle School Gym to talk to the new coach of girls' soccer, Matt Angelo.
It's my first day taking over the team. The girls and I met about two, three weeks ago, and it's been a great preseason. I really have been trying to look for things to complain about, things that we can work on, but they've honestly been working so hard. They've been, every single day, coming to tryouts. Made my coaching staff and I's decision who was going to be in the varsity team super difficult, resulting in we kept 22 players, which is like a huge number, which is like a credit to them. It's all their hard work and everything. So we've been chipping away every single day.
I spoke with a couple of captains on their take of the upcoming season.
So we've really been having practice every day this week, working hard, getting a lot of conditioning and getting a lot of touches on the ball, and really seeing each opponent as they come.
Yeah, and also even before the season started, a lot of us practiced beforehand, whether it was like unofficial captains' practice, and we also did the MSA league.
As the sports season begins, the girls want to succeed, but in order to accomplish this, they will need to work together and do their part on and off the field.
I want to compete. That's it. No expectations for how many wins, how many losses. We're not talking about tournament. We're not talking about having a winless season like they had a few years ago. We want to compete with every single team, and I think we have the makeup to do that. I think we're going to surprise a lot of teams this year.
I feel like this season is a lot of just like mentally being prepared and ready. I feel like we've done a lot of like touches on the ball in practice, but it's really the mental thing, and I feel like we can really take away a lot from that by like all working together and like getting hyped together before pasta parties, hanging out, just like building a lot of team chemistry.
Yeah, I'm really just hoping to take away, this is my last season, hoping to get a lot out of it, make a lot of new friends, get everyone together for one last year, and hopefully come out with a winning season.
From Marshall Simons Middle School, I'm B News sports reporter Robert Paris.
Girls varsity swimming held a home meet on Thursday afternoon against the Melrose Red Raiders at Shoshine Valley Technical High. The team did well and added another victory to the column with a final score of 99 to 71. Jackie Damato made it to the state competition after a performance in the 200 free relay. The team has had somewhat of a break, as they will not return to action until Wednesday afternoon against the Belmont Marauders. The boys varsity soccer team traveled to Redding to take on the Rockets on Thursday afternoon. No one No one went home happy after a 0-0 tie took place. Junior Liam Gaffney was a big game changer as he prevented the Rockets from scoring any points. The team will travel way up north to take on the Marblehead Magicians on Monday afternoon. One final note, the Burlington High School football team will be having their first game on Saturday afternoon at Lawrence Veterans Memorial Stadium against the Lawrence Lancers. Good luck, gentlemen. And that's all for your weekly sports report. I'm Liz Gillespie, back to you guys in the studio.
Another week, another photo to highlight. This week's photo shows local heroes meeting with the Burlington students. It is from the Burlington Public Schools and shows a gathering at the Pine Glen Elementary School called Heroes Assembly, where the school and its students recognize all of Burlington's local heroes in the Burlington Police and Fire Departments. During the ceremony, Pine Glen students read letters of thanks to the members of the police and fire departments who were in attendance. They also presented Chief Kent and Chief Patterson with letters from their classmates to share back at the stations with members of their departments who could not be present. The students also recognized Pine Glen graduate and pilot Thomas McGinnis, who was lost on September 11. Great to see many young Burlington residents learning the importance of service to the community and country. We'd like to see your photo, they could be of something you see around town, the weather outside your own door, or even photos of your family members, friends, and pets, whatever you think is interesting and would like to share. Email your photos to bcatt@bcattv.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." Okay, that's it from the news desk here at B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher, along with Rich Hosford, Tad Stefenak, Chris Flaherty, Robert Paris, John Vias, Peter Brown, and me. We leave you now with, what do we leave you with? We leave you with a musical performance from the middle school band Desi James and the Smart Alex, playing and performing Queen's hit song "Radio Gaga" at the Wayside Shopping Center. Thank you for joining us.[1755.51]